Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. The time is now 7:03. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice of this meeting was published in December 7, 2023, issues of the Nutley Sun, The Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall bulletin board and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Kelly will be here shortly. Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present.
Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Yes, we have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes from March 5, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for minutes.
Reports, Commissioner Evans?
I have a co-conform report for the month of February.
Commissioner Tucci?
I have a shade tree report for the month of March.
Bills, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Bill list for April 2nd, 2024. Public Affairs, $75,355.37. Revenue and Finance, $3,381,126.68. Public Safety, $84,099.07. Public Works, $68,683.65. Parks and Public Property, $1,433,180.83. Water Utility, $102,774.28. Payroll for Friday, March 15, 2024. Regular payroll total, $930,151.1. Overtime payroll total, $53,954.64. Total payroll, $984,105.65. For a grand total of $6,129,325.53.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's it for bills, ma'am.
Let's move to public comment on agenda items only. Would anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing none, let's move to Board of Commissioner announcements. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, Mayor. Just a reminder coming up, late night voter registration and late, late night animal licensing will be on April 23. The Municipal Clerk's Office will be open until 9:00 PM that night. Also, we have, if John was here, he would say the same thing. We have the rabies clinic for vaccination for dogs and cats. On April 29, the Municipal Clerk's Office will also be present to take care of registrations, and that runs from 4:30 to 8:30 at the firehouse. Commissioner Petracca, thank you again for allowing the firehouse to be used. And then Tuesday, April 30, we have late night animal registration at the clerk's office until 8:00 PM. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Tucci?
Not really an announcement, just a thank you to everyone that attended our egg extravaganza in the morning at 44 Park Avenue and those that attended our flashlight Easter egg hunt. There were two great events. I think everyone had a great time, and I just want to thank everyone for coming out.
Thank you, and it was a great time. Very good, very good job by the Parks Department and yourself.
Thank you.
Commissioner Petracca?
Thought you were gonna skip me. No. I too just like to thank all the residents for coming out to public safety for our special Easter bunny thing. I'm sorry I couldn't make the flashlight egg hunt, but it was my daughter-in-law's birthday as a married woman, so I could not miss that, but I heard it was great more.
You were absent excuse, Commissioner.
Well, thank you. And I would also just like to keep reminding people about locking their doors. All of a sudden, it has gotten a little quiet with these break-ins, but they seem like there's a rash of them. They happen like three at a time, and it's very simple. If your doors are locked, then your house doors are locked. They will move on to the next house. So please, we have signs all over the streets now on our message boards about locking your door, so please continue to do so. You'll be helping us out also. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Just real quick, I asked my granddaughter, who will be three in May, to come with me to go to the flashlight Easter egg hunt, and she just said, no, Baba, it's dark out. You go. So we didn't make it.
You didn't make it, okay.
Well, the only announcement I have is that on April 13, we'll have our shredding day. Chance to get rid of some of your very sensitive documents. We always do that around tax day, so April 13, Saturday, we will have the shredding day. So let's move on to ordinance introductions. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amendment to bring us in line with the requirements of the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. The majority of the changes to our ordinance here in Nutley, our tree ordinance here are in the definitions, all right, and in the diameter of private trees where permits are required. Prior to this amendment, a tree needed to be 18 inches or larger in order for a permit to be required to remove it. The DEP has since changed that to six inches at a height of four feet. So having said that, this is an ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the code of the Township of Nutley, Chapter 665, entitled Trees. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on May 7. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
May 7, 2024. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, Mayor, I have an ordinance introduction to complete the exterior infrastructure improvements and related services for town hall. It's in the amount of $250,000. This is a fully funded capital improvement ordinance, so that it does not require us to issue any new debt in order to do this. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertise in Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on May 7, 2024. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's move to public hearings. Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, I have ordinance number 3545. This is for the Chief of Police, an ordinance to be fixed to fix the salaries of certain officers and employees of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, effective January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2025. Move to open public hearing.
Would anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3545? Seeing none?
Move to close.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. And this ordinance number is 3546. This is for our Fire Chief, an ordinance to fix salary of a certain officers and employees of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, effective January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2025. Move to open the public hearing.
Would anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3546? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Move.
I'm closing ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi, Chief Capone. Thank you for being here, recognizing the importance of this evening. I vote aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Congratulations, Chief.
Congratulations, Chief.
Well deserved.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Let's see if Commissioner Kelly comes late, we'll move his resolutions to the end, and if not, we'll somebody else, maybe I'll read them. I don't have anything on the agenda. So we'll go to Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm getting there. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that your treasurer be and is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of property taxes for $6,524.68 per Block 6800, Lot 1. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
My next resolution authorizes the treasurer to refund escrow monies for land use applications in the amount of $16,983.36 for the addresses listed in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to retain the professional services of Ricky Planning to provide professional planning and affordable housing, consulting services, including but not limited to the preparation of an updated housing element and fair share plan and spending plan. And whereas this contract is awarded without competitive bidding as a professional service in accordance with NJSA 19:448-20.4 or 5 of local public contracts law, because the contract is for a professional service. Where the Board of Commissioners has determined that Ricky located at 177 Monmouth Avenue, Atlantic Highlands, New Jersey, is qualified and best suited to provide the services to the Township of Nutley. And whereas Ricky has completed and submitted a business engine disclosure certification, which certifies that it has not made any reportable disqualifying contribution to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions for the term of the contract. Whereas funds are available in account T26909902 and will be certified by the chief financial officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution and will be reimbursed by the escrow accounts set up by the redeveloper of the subject property. Ricky has submitted a proposal for services in the amount not to exceed $5,000. The anticipated term is 12 months, beginning April 2 through April 1, 2025, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that one, the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Ricky as a professional service in the amount not to exceed $5,000. And that two, the copy of this resolution, as well as the contract, shall be placed on file with the clerk of the Township of Nutley, and a notice in accordance with local public contracts laws of the State of New Jersey shall be published in the Nutley Sun. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the chief municipal financial officer abruptly departed his position at the Township of Nutley, necessitating the urgent need to hire temporary accounting services to ensure that accounting function for the township continues to operate well. Whereas the financial risks arising from the above departure constitute an emergency pursuant to NJSA 48:11-6, and as such, the director of the Department of Revenue and Finance will seek to engage temporary professional resources that will bridge the gap created by the departure of the CMFO, enabling the completion of various tasks necessary for filing of financial statements and paying our bills. And whereas the estimated cost of providing these additional services estimated not to exceed $25,000 for 2024, whereas funds are available in account 401226200 and have been certified by the interim CMFO, subject to the adoption of the 24 budget, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the qualified purchase engaged pursuant to NJAC5:34 at SEC, excuse me, and NJSA 48:11-6 is authorized to pay these temporary resources as necessary. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, whereas the Township of Nutley determined that the property described on Schedule A and be attached here to incorporated hereon has been abandoned by its owners and titled as junk, cleared through the New Jersey Division of Motor Vehicles, whereas the towing contract between the Township of Nutley and Nicoletti Towing and Township of Nutley, Twin Towing, authorizes the release of abandoned vehicles left on their premises by the owners, lien holders via junk title certificate cleaned, cleared through the New Jersey Division of Motor Vehicle, and whereas the owners lien holders have been notified of such. And whereas the junk title certificates are being conducted pursuant to the New Jersey Division of Motor Vehicle, NJSA 3910A-1 through 3910A-7 laws, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township clerk is hereby authorized to release the abandoned personal property vehicles as indicated in Schedule A. A certified copy of the resolution be forwarded to the Township clerk, followed by Chief of Police, Chief Financial Officers. These is for a 2016 Honda, 2006 Nissan, 2005 Chevy, and a 2007 Dodge, 1998 Honda, and 2014 Honda. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The Township, whereas the Township of Nutley has determined that the property described in Schedule A attached here to incorporated hereon has been abandoned by its owners and title is cleared through the Division of Motor Vehicle, where its towing contract between Township of Nicoletti and Twin Towing authorizes abandoned vehicles. So this is basically the same resolution with different vehicles. So to save a little time, I'll just read the vehicles. It's a 2008 Chevrolet, a 2003 Infiniti, 2013 Mercedes-Benz, 2009 Hyundai, and a 2005 Toyota. I'll move it as written.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas distracted driving is a serious life-threatening practice that is preventable. And whereas distracted driving can result in injuries and deaths to all roads users, motorists, pedestrians, and bicyclists. And whereas distracted driving occurs when drivers divert their attention away from the task of driving to focus on another activity instead. And whereas in 2022 alone, distracted driving-related crashes resulted in 3,477 deaths and over 391,000 injuries on our nation's roads. And whereas in New Jersey, distracted driving was listed as a contributing circumstance in over 47% of all motor vehicle crashes in 2022. Whereas the State of New Jersey will participate in nationwide distracted driving 2024 crackdown from April 1 through the 30th, 2024, in an effort to raise awareness and decrease driver distraction through a combination of enforcement and education, where the nation's slogan for the campaign, "You drive, you text, you pay." And whereas a reduction in distracted driving in New Jersey will serve lives on the roadways. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Township of Nutley declares its support for distracted driving 2024 crackdown both locally and nationally from April 1 through the 30th, 2024, and pledges to increase awareness of the dangers of distracted driving. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Before I vote aye, this is one that we've been doing for a long time, and it's so true. When you really look at this resolution, 47% of accidents in this nation is because of distracted driving, which 99% I'm sure is from cellphone use. So with Bluetooth and all that stuff, I urge everybody. I mean, the worst thing that you could do is take somebody's life. I was actually in an accident on Route 23 probably 12 years ago, or maybe longer. My kids were a little weak still, and I was stopped at a red light where Fred Rutgers was, and a girl comes crashing into me. And man, did she ring my bell. And she was a young kid and a really nice girl. She was driving her grandmother's car, and I said, alls I want to do is ask you, what were you looking at? She goes, actually, my phone. And of course, I didn't press that issue, but long story short, thank God I was okay, and she was okay. But it could happen in a blink. Keep your eyes on the road and stay off your phone, you know, as most as you can, because there's other things that you could use today. So I proudly vote aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Okay. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Resolution Number 37-24 adopted on February 20, 2024, entitled Safe and Secure Grant for the Police Department is hereby rescinded. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey as follows. The Township of Nutley is authorized to accept sub grant from the State of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Office of the Attorney General in the amount of $45,150 under the Safe and Secure Community Program, grant number 24-0716, with a match of a fringe benefit and salary for total projected cost of $329,178.91. Mayor Joseph P. Scarpelli and Chief Thomas Schrumo are authorized to execute and the Township clerk to attest to the sub grant award in connection with the grant and any and all documents in connection with this grant. Township of Nutley is accepting this grant of funds for the purpose described on this application, sub grant period August 1, 2023 to July 31, 2024. Certified copy of this resolution shall be provided by the Office of the Township Clerk to each of the following: Mayor Scarpelli, Township Attorney, Chief Financial Officer, Police Department, State of New Jersey Attorney General's Office, and Office of the Attorney General, Department of Law and Public Safety. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas Good Shepherd Academy and Township, which remains, the Nutley Police Department hereon referred to as the MPD, are authorized to purchase and provide security services for the respective jurisdiction. And whereas Good Shepherd Academy and the Township are of the opinion that these services can be more efficiently and economically provided to Good Shepherd Academy through agreement providing for special law enforcement officer, three, referred to as Sicily, all three, as the school security officer for Good Shepherd Academy. Whereas the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, desire to enter into this agreement, authorizing the Township to provide security services to Good Shepherd Academy in form of a retired police officer provided by the Nutley Police Department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that this resolution shall authorize the appropriate township official to enter the attach agreement with Good Shepherd Academy. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner, I apologize if I could just, that word retired, it should be crossed down. Can move it like that? Thank you. I move it. Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci? Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas sealed bids for improvements to municipal plaza were opened and read on Wednesday, March 6, 2024, in the Township of Nutley. And whereas Zucaro Inc., 64 Commerce Street, Garfield, New Jersey, was the lowest responsible bidder at a cost of $596,000. And whereas funds are available from account number G-04-182401 and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract for improvements to municipal plaza be awarded to Zucaro Inc. Before I move this, I just want to mention that I believe this is probably the first time in over 100 years that the front of town hall will be redone professionally, all right? And in conjunction with this, while we're moving around some of the monuments and modernizing and improving just the overall look, we will be creating a mall in Memorial One, beginning right behind the police station going down with a water feature that's going to be donated by the Rotary. So that water feature may be a waterfall. It may be a fountain. We're not sure yet, but we're in the process of completing that design also. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes, just to add to Commissioner Tucci's comments, I agree. It's long overdue, but also from the standpoint of the financial planning that we do, this is fully funded. It's not, we're not talking about new debt or raising taxes in order to get this done. We have been able to provide for this over time, and now we're going to execute on it because we got basically valid pricing to do it, but a lot of effort went into that. So thank you for doing that work. Thank you for actually supporting the planning effort that went into it in order to get us to this point. I vote aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, just one additional comment. It's a very important one. I'd be remiss if I didn't inform everyone. We will also be incorporating a vault, all right, underground, which will hold our Christmas tree. So that portion of the display will be moved from that portion of the oval to right in front of town hall. So it should be something really beautiful. I very proudly vote aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to go ahead with Commissioner Kelly's resolutions. Hopefully, I'll do a good job of his step. Whereas more than 100,000 people in the United States are waiting for life-saving organ transplant, nearly 4,000 are New Jersey residents. And whereas more than 46,000 organ transplants from 23,000 donors brought new life to patients and their families in 2023. And whereas every eight minutes, another person is added to the national transplant waiting list while 17 people die every day waiting for a transplant.
Let me be clear.
And whereas one organ, eye, and tissue donor has the ability to save up to eight lives, restore sight to two people, and heal the lives of more than 75 people, individuals of all ages are considered potential organ and tissue donors. And whereas April 12, 2024, has been designated as Blue and Green Day, at which time residents are encouraged to wear blue and green to celebrate those who have been touched by the gift of life. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, recognize April as National Donate Life Month 2024. Be further resolved that the Health Department encourages all citizens to consider being coming an organ and tissue donor by placing the organ donor designation on their driver's license or state identification card or registering online at www.donatelifnj.org and sharing this decision with their family. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas from April 1, 2024 through April 30, 2024, the United States celebrates Arab American Heritage Month, honoring the rich heritage, history, and contributions of more than 3.5 million Arab Americans across the country. These individuals have played a significant role in shaping the American story, advancing our nation, embodying the truth that diversity is our greatest strength. Whereas Arab Americans have made enduring contributions to varying aspects of American life, and whereas Arab Americans have served in the Continental Army, fought for freedom during World War II, and contributed to the growth of cities and communities across the nation. And whereas Arab American professionals, including engineers, scientists, and medical experts, continue to pioneer breakthroughs and chart a better future for all. And whereas Arab American entrepreneurs and business owners create jobs and uplift communities, and whereas Arab American teachers, community leaders inspire the next generation. Whereas Arab American Heritage Month serves as a reminder of the resilience, service, and cultural richness of this community, let us honor their legacy and continue to build a stronger nation together. Whereas the people of the United States have reason to honor the great achievements and contributions of Arab Americans and their ancestors, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, ask the community to join them in recognizing and celebrating April as Arab American Heritage Month. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Public comment?
Yes, yes.
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone, provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes, or remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none, Mr. Bruno?
Mayor, we do have a need to, well, in close session, to discuss contract negotiations.
And what are your wishes?
Mayor, if I might, some of you may have noticed on the way in that our buildings are lit in blue in honor of autism of a month, the month of April. This is to bring awareness and recognition to those who have autism and who are on the spectrum. So here in Nutley, we are very proud to recognize all the good work that's been done in the past and hope that everyone continues to deal with this autism situation as it exists. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you need a motion for executive?
Yes, please.
Move it. Second.
Whereas Section Whereas Section Eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty one, Public Law, nineteen seventy five
Must be long.
permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nully in the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nully, move into closed executive session to discuss contract negotiations and litigation. Be further resolved that the time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be when, and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nully pending and or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi. There'll be no further action. Could I have the motion to adjourn?
Move it. Second.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi. Night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
The time is now seven thirty four.